I call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors September 8th, 2025, meeting to order. This evening, we have Pastor Joe Naylor, Joe Naylor from Heritage Baptist Church in Providence Forge to lead us in invocation and pledge. Pastor?
Thank you. Let's bow our heads and pray, please. Almighty God in heaven, we come before your throne tonight and ask that your hand be upon these proceedings. Father, your word informs us that you're the one who instituted earthly government, and God, it is ultimately subject to your will. So we ask you tonight, Lord, to oversee and direct these proceedings. Father, let everything in this meeting be done in an orderly manner and with respect and civility among the people present here. God, we pray you will give wisdom and discernment to the ladies and gentlemen of the board and of the supervisors and leaders of New Kent County. We pray all things accomplished here tonight for this community would be according to your perfect and holy will, and it is in Christ Jesus, our Savior's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, let's say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you.
I appreciate the invitation to be here. Appreciate the board and all those that are present, and I was asked to be, I was asked, I didn't ask, but I was asked to share a little bit about our ministry. Our church is new down in Providence Forge Heritage Baptist Church. We have been there just getting, just celebrating four years, and I just, we, our heart was to be able to contribute to this community and the county, not only just as ministry, but an outreach to the county. We have a monthly family movie night that's all free that will be coming up on the 19th, and the admission is free. It's the best popcorn in the county. Probably, I would say not because I pop it, but I think it is. The candy, the drinks, everything is free. It's family friendly, so it's a good chance just to get out and have a good night out. The 21st of this month, we are sponsoring a concert on Sunday evening at 7:00 PM with Country Bluegrass Group, Nashville Group, Chosen Road. They will be there at 7:00 o'clock. You can find an anything, any profit, which I'm not sure about. If there is any profit, then it goes into our building fund, but we'd love for you to come. You can go to our Facebook page or website, Heritage Baptist Church Providence Forge, and you'll see where you can scan tickets, and if you use the discount code listed there, it makes the tickets about half price. All the refreshments are free. It's a meet and greet, so we build it as an intimate evening with Chosen Road, and so we'd love for you to bring your family and come, and again, thank you all for allowing me to be here tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Ms. Stewart?
Here.
Welcome, everyone, this evening here with us and watching at home. My first item is the consent agenda. Board members, do you have any comments, concerns, changes?
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question. On the blue line solutions line item in the fiscal year 26 appropriations, I just wanted to clarify that those are from this, probably from the school fines that have been paid recently because the Interstate 64 fines had not gone into effect yet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Just one more thing.
Ms. Pearson?
So, and also, the 9/11 grant funding from VDOT for $150,000, that is a brand-new grant? Okay. I read the consent agenda, and I was wondering about the salary line item, but I think that's the last item on our agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That's related to the ordinance for the bonuses.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. I was just thinking about the supplanting rule and all of that stuff, so, thank you.
Well, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Any other discussion? Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Next is the residency administrator's report. Oh, no, I'm sorry, citizens' comment period. Drop it to you. Has anyone signed up this evening? Thank you. We have four people signed up this evening. When I call your name, I'll ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will be given three minutes to speak. First is Freddie Holliday.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Name Freddie Holliday, 621 Farmer Drive, Burnsville, Virginia. My concern, it may be new to some and old to other. Route 600, Holly Fork Road, where the bridge goes into James City County. It's been closed for roughly maybe 10 years, and we seem they can't get any resolution about getting that road back open. A couple, maybe a couple months ago, there was a situation on Holly Fork Road where the road was shut down. If it was a little bit further down, those people would be trapped and have no way to get in or out because of no egress on the other end once you pass Triangle Road. So I don't know whether y'all have any policy on these bridges dammed in spillway, whether it's something that the board would have to come up with or refer to the state for legislation or to the national for somebody to take over these things because most of these spillways and stuff that's here are falling down, and the people that build them are in heaven. So you can't depend on the ones that built it to fix them and so you can put a bridge across the dam or the creek or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Dismore?
Good evening. My name is Bill Dismore, and I reside at 8,008 West Lloyd Bottetort Loop. It's a resident in the Groves Community in the farms of New Kent. I thank you for allowing the opportunity to speak. I'm here to urge the board to consider the impact that economic development will have upon employees of these new businesses as they seek to establish operations in our county. I also urge you to consider the current situation of our residents who are frustrated in their search to find affordable housing. Today, I attended the Keys to Housing Affordability Summit hosted by our Virginia Senator Mark Warner, and I was presented with these eye-opening statistics. Nationally, the USA is 6 million housing units short of need. Two out of every three workers today can't afford the American dream owning a home. The average age of a first-time home buyer is now 38 years old. Inflation is at its highest level in 40 years. Tariffs are increasing the cost of building materials and creating supply shortages and market uncertainty. The average home sales price in New Kent County is approaching $460,000. Housing prices nationally have increased 55% since 2020. The 30-year mortgage rate is predicted to remain at 6.5% for at least the next two years. In spite of what you hear about the Fed reducing rates, the prediction is it won't affect mortgages much. Rental growth is outpacing homeownership with the annual rent today approaching $1,500. In 2020, it was $1,200. Property, as property values increase, so do real estate taxes, insurance, down payment requirements exerting pressure on those with fixed incomes, including our seniors. We must work together at the local, state, and federal level to find solutions to solve this growing problem. It won't be easy, but we have to find a way. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Phillips?
I'm Gapo. Jessica Phillips, 17265 Lee's Reach Drive in Lenexa. I'm here on behalf of the Eastern Chickahominy Tribe located in New Kent County, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd like to address a concern about how communication between the county and the tribe has unfolded regarding the Make Me Woods property. The tribe began reaching out to New Kent County over a year ago regarding the property of which we have strong ancestral and cultural ties. We've sent numerous emails requesting communication. We've sent proposals, and we've made calls and left voicemails. Not once did any of the board respond to our requests, excuse me, except for one email response to fill out a form to be on the agenda at a meeting. While that is not an appropriate platform for government-to-government consultation, we filled out the form and still received no response. We've only learned of decisions regarding the property through news articles and social media. This is unacceptable and disrespectful. It's important to recognize that the relationship between a federally recognized tribal nation and local government is government to government. That kind of engagement should not be limited to a few moments sitting in front of a public comment period. Public comment is valuable, but it's not an appropriate substitute for consultation with the sovereign government. Additionally, I want to note that if the county intends to make Make Me property a park, it will trigger the Section 106 process under the National Historic Preservation Act. This means that by law, the county will have to be required to consult with the tribe. When working with federally recognized tribes, conversations must begin early in the process. This is not just best practice. It is necessary to build relationships and to ensure tribes are properly included before any decisions are made or public feedback begins. When tribes are not consulted early, it often leads to delays, legal obligations being triggered later in the process, and missed opportunities for collaboration that could have strengthened the outcome for everyone involved. We do appreciate that one of your members has recently agreed to meet with our chief. That is a positive step forward, but I encourage the rest of the board to also arrange direct face-to-face meetings with our tribal leadership. That is how trust is built, how both of our governments can work together in good faith, not only on decisions as significant as the future of Make Me Woods, but also for future projects that benefit both the tribe and the county, such as improving public services and developing more resilient infrastructure. Thank you for your time, and I hope you will join us in building a respectful and cooperative relationship. Thank you.
Final speaker this evening is Mr. William Smith.
Good evening, board. My name is William Martin Smith. I live at 4240 Holly Fork Road, Highway 600 in Burnsville. I just want to thank the board and Ms. Stewart for all the work they've been doing to get Make Me Woods in the forefront. I hope we can continue to work together in good faith and see things happen and make Make Me Woods a park. Thank you. Song 1914.
Thank you. That ends the citizens' comment period. Next is the residency administrator's report. Mr. Fraser?
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Hathaway, staff, Philip Fraser of VDOT. Appreciate you having me here tonight. I'm going to do things a little bit differently, not going to focus on the maintenance report. I will give you a quick update about mowing grass before I get into the meat and potatoes of what I have to talk about tonight. We did issue a notice to proceed to our contractor to complete our secondary mowing cycle. If you remember, we do, we mow in a couple different phases. We mow our primary systems, anything below a 600 number three times a year before Memorial Day, the Fourth of July, and then again before Labor Day. So that has been completed, and then we also mow our secondary system twice a year. So again, that notice proceed was issued last week. The earliest they could begin mowing, the secondary system is today with a required start date by the 19th of September. So that's what I was going to share regarding maintenance. I will absolutely take questions when I am done about any kind of maintenance issues. I also know the gentleman back here was asking about the bridge out on Holly Fork Hill, or I think it's Holly Fork Road. We're going to look into that, and I can share that, whatever I find, with you, Mr. Hathaway, Ms. Stewart. I think he's one of your constituents. So we will do that and hopefully get you some type of response about what's going on with that. So, like I said, really what I want to focus on this afternoon, this evening, is about the I-64 gap, but more particularly about the Route 106 bridge replacement that is underway. I know there's been a lot of concerns. I know there's been some frustration with some of the backups. I know there's been some safety concerns that yourself and the sheriff's office and we, quite honestly, have all received about the operations of traffic through that work zone. So what I did, I came here a little bit early, and I apologize for not giving you this in advance, virtually, or an email, so it would be in your packet, but I, we've developed what we're calling the I-64 Gap Widening Amos Church Road Bridge Replacement FAQ page. We put this together pretty soon after the onset of the project where the temporary signal was installed to answer some of the questions. This is something similar to what we did on the Fifth Street Bridge in the city of Richmond, where you're going from I-64 to 95. We had a lot of similar concerns. We had traffic backing up on, on the interstate. It was creating a lot of concern. So this was a good, a good tool for us to be able to share with the public and, you know, elected officials like yourself. So I'm going to go through it. I'm not going to read everything verbatim, but I am going to go through it in detail. I hope you have time for that. So the first thing on here, it says, "Why is VDOT replacing the Amos Church Road Bridge instead of performing maintenance?" And "Before the proposed diverging diamond interchange project at this location." So, "The Amos Church Road Bridge is structurally deficient and is beyond simple maintenance, causing replacement to be the more fiscally responsible approach." I'm going to highlight that structurally deficient absolutely does not mean that the bridge is unsafe. It does not. I can go into a little bit more detail. I have a second flyer that I shared with you guys that talks about VDOT's bridge inspection program, the definitions, and really what structurally deficient means. So I'll come back to that in a few minutes when I'm done here and provide a little bit more insight on it, but I think first and foremost, it needs to be very, very clear that the bridge is structurally deficient, but that does not mean it is unsafe for use. So why is the bridge replacement going to take so long? Well, it has to be completed in multiple phases. It is a narrow bridge. Again, it's structurally deficient, so it receives what we call state-of-good-repair funds. It kind of requires us to replace the bridge, what we call in-kind, meaning if it is a 20-foot bridge before, when it's structurally deficient, the funds are there to fund a 20-foot new bridge, so not widening the bridge. So there is not enough space to maintain two lanes of traffic along the bridge during construction. Therefore, we're in a phased approach where you remove one side of the bridge, so the west half of the existing bridge is going to be demolished and reconstructed while the east half of the bridge is utilized for that one-way traffic. Then, Phase 2, that's about seven to nine months of construction, Phase 2, we will switch everything over to the newly constructed half of the bridge for traffic and demo the existing piece that people are driving on today. So that is the phasing plan for this project. So why is a temporary signal necessary to facilitate the replacement? Again, to accommodate the multi-phased replacement, two traffic signals, temporary traffic signals are installed to allow the continuous bi-directional, single-lane traffic across the bridge. The alternative was a detour, and you can imagine a detour with that bridge. Not only does it require anybody to go down to 60, if they want to go, if you want to go south, you're north of the bridge. You start at north end of the bridge, and you want to go south to Providence Forge, you now have to go north up to 249 and meander your way back to 60 to get to that, that location, similar with the southern side. If you want to go from, you know, the Loves or the Pilots to the Courthouse, you would have to go south and then back up 155 to get back to 249. So that was not something that was really, the department had an appetite for, to create that type of detour that doesn't even consider the impacts for folks that are trying to access the interstate. If you're coming out of Loves or you're coming from the different communities north of the bridge, you would not be able to go to a certain direction of the interstate. You would be forced, if you're north of the bridge, you would have to go west, and if you were south of the bridge, you would have to go east. There would be no other way to go the opposite direction on I-64. So that's what made the, the traffic signal and the one-way traffic the necessary traffic control plan. So which direction of travel are the traffic signals giving priority to? I think this has been a big question. Where, who has the priority? The priority is given to the ramps, the off-ramp and the on-ramp. What we don't want to have happen is traffic queuing up past the ramp onto the main line of I-64. We know that with the gap widening, we've always had some crash issues on I-64 with two lanes of traffic and a lot of congestion. That's why we're doing the project in the first place. It's always been the bottleneck. We have high speeds. So the last thing we wanted to do was have queuing of traffic back onto the ramp. So there is detection equipment on the ramps that picks up those vehicles in a queue. Now, it's important to call it out as a queue because what happened when the signal was initially installed, and I think I've talked a little bit about this before, but just going to regurgitate it, it was picking up what we would call pass-through traffic or pass-by vehicles, and it was telling the system, "Go ahead and start, cycle through, and get back to the ramps to get them off." Didn't matter if there was two vehicles. Me and my staff, when we came in this afternoon, we actually came in on I-64 heading eastbound. We got off at the ramp to go 106 and made a right. There was about three vehicles that were in that queue at the temporary signal, but you can imagine when we first installed the signal, it was picking that up as one vehicle passing by, and we have a queue all the way back to the interstate, which is why we were having a lot of issues, you know, within the first week. That has all been rectified. The equipment is operating like it's supposed to, and that is actually covered here in the FAQ as well. So right here, it talks a little bit about when the rush hours are. We see that during the morning peak. We see that during the evening peak, something that is a little bit maybe less common. We're seeing it also in the afternoon lunch hour period. I don't know if that has to do with a lot of truck traffic traveling up and down I-64 and going to the rest areas at that time or the truck stops. I will tell you, I've been out a couple times to actually watch it during some of those different peak hours, specifically came at about 11:30 to watch. At that time, I've seen it as short as about two or three vehicles in the northbound direction of 106, understanding that there are plenty of times where it backs up to Jimmy Burrell, and I'm not going to discount that. So it does happen. Okay, we've had some questions about why the work seems to be, doesn't ever seem to be anything happening out there. Well, part of that is because the work has to be done at night. Whenever you're demoing a bridge, you don't do it over live traffic. Well, we have two lanes of live traffic on I-64. Well, we have two lanes of live traffic on I-64. And the last thing we're gonna do is shut down a lane of traffic on I-64 during the middle of the day because that's when we have our, our higher volumes. So they are doing lane closures on I-64 at nighttime when they are doing the demolition of the bridge over that live lane. So that, that is why the work is being done during, during the night. At some point, you will be able to start seeing a little bit more activity happening during the day. And then we put in here, there are alternate routes. I think everybody knows that. That's not to belittle anybody, but we do want, you know, remind folks that there are opportunities to, to go to Route 60 and go to 249 if, if it's necessary to avoid the interchange altogether and, and the congestion. So it's common in there that we, we included. The last thing I'll say about the FAQ is, we do encourage, we understand that you guys are getting a lot of those calls. I wanna encourage everybody, I hope folks are listening at home, I hope folks are listening here, reach out to VDOT. We included our contact information here. I know it's a call, it's a hotline, it's our 1-800-4-RODE number, but we always encourage folks to use that, to share your thoughts. It gets directed to the appropriate people. It may be me and my staff, it may be our construction staff. It actually works out of a different group, but I'm more than happy to speak on behalf of them. But it gets, it gets those comments to the right folks. So I would, I would definitely encourage any of your constituents and just remind them that that is an, an option for them to reach out to VDOT directly. I, I can tell you this as well, our construction team has been really good about responding and communicating back with, with the folks that have done that already. Okay, so before I get into the general, the bridge inspection form that I shared, I'm gonna talk a little bit about what VDOT is doing. What, what are we doing? Our construction team, what is the residency doing to try and help manage this and mitigate some of the issues that are being experienced? You'll notice there's some shoulder work. If you came through within the last day, my team was out last night on that northbound 106 shoulder approaching the bridge. They are removing that stone and then backfilling it, compacting it, and then we are gonna add asphalt and we are gonna make it an accessible shoulder. That shoulder is intended to help deal with some of the queuing that is being, being experienced in the northbound direction all the way back to Jimmy Burrell. I told you, I don't wanna discount it and I know it happens. So I really hope that this is gonna be a good step in the right direction to mitigate some of those issues. We, we had a meeting with county staff and with some of yourselves last week to discuss some other potential things that we wanna consider. I'll be quite honest with you, it's not something that I can give you a whole lot of updates about now. I know there was a request about can we do anything with the existing ramps on I-64 to do similar to what we're doing on 106 northbound? Take advantage of some of the existing shoulders out there. It's something that I don't have the ability to, to do with, with state forces. It's something that is outside of the limits of disturbance and the permitting of the I-64 gap project. So we have some complications on doing any of that kind of work. Again, I'm not shutting the door on that quite yet. I'm gonna turn over a couple more stones and see and if there's some way I can partner with the folks internally at VDOT to see if we can, you know, make it a little bit better and a little bit more digestible for the folks. So that's one thing that we're doing. There was a request for some signage. I mentioned safety is one of the issues. Most of what I've talked about so far is regarding the operations, safety. We do have gotten plenty of reports of where folks are meeting head-on on the bridge. The good note, there's not a lot of good about that, but the good note is that folks are going pretty slow. They are not navigating across the bridge at a high rate of speed. So I don't know that we've had any kind of severe accidents or incidents, but it is definitely impacting operations when it happens. You have a tractor-trailer and another tractor-trailer meet head-on, someone's gotta back up and it takes time to, to back, to back up and make room. So there was a request to put out some signage that says, no left on red. I will be honest, that is an unusual request for us because quite honestly, I think we all know, it is absolutely 100% illegal to make a left on red unless it is a one-way street to a one-way street. So, so that, that still seems to be true. I can also say, we oftentimes, we put signs up, doesn't mean that folks necessarily follow the signs. But it is something that I think we're willing to, to consider. It's, I don't know that there is a standard regulatory sign out there that I can just pull off the shelf and install. So it's something that I'm gonna have to dig into a little bit more and see if, if we can figure that out. I do know that the sheriff's office, believe it's the sheriff's office, has put up a message board that definitely communicates that. So one thing I wanna mention about how the phasing works, and this is getting into a little bit of the details, but I think the reason more so than not knowing that it's illegal to make that left, I think what's more likely happening is folks are getting impatient. There is an extended red time when you change directions of travel. So if you can imagine, we have four cycles, there's four different movements. You're coming off the ramp one direction, you're coming off the ramp in the westbound direction, and then you're going northbound on 106 and you're going southbound on 106. Those are four different cycles. When you go from a cycle of moving traffic in the northbound direction, and then you go to the next cycle, which is also moving in the northbound direction, you might have an all-red time by a couple seconds, meaning everybody, all the signals there are all red. It's only for a couple seconds. But what happens is, is when we switch to the next phase where you're gonna have traffic coming back in the opposing direction, that red time is going to be longer. And the reason is, is because we want to clear the bridge, have to clear the bridge. You don't wanna have a short queue or a short all-red time because you will inevitably have a straggler, whether it's a truck or a vehicle that's trying to cross the bridge. We've already said that they're driving pretty slow across a 750-foot-long bridge. They will impact someone who gets a green. So it's, it is an extended amount of all-red time. That happens twice throughout the cycle. When you go from a northbound, the northbound movements to the southbound movements and back when you go from the southbound movements to the northbound movements. It's a much longer all-red time. So I think folks are getting impatient. I think folks are seeing that there's nobody there and they're making their movement. So I think it's a combination of things. But what I would urge anybody who's listening, and not all of our culverts are listening, I know that, but please, stop on red, go on green. Do not, do not go past red. I would incur or just beg folks to just wait, be patient. I know that there's, there's some queuing, I know that there's a wait time. Sometimes it's two minutes, sometimes it's 10 minutes, and sometimes it's been up to 20-plus minutes. I, I get that. But I would encourage folks, wait until you get a green and navigate across that bridge because it inevitably, it's safer. But it also, those operational impacts, just they go downstream and it's hard to catch back up. So you start to see these queues get bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger, and it's a snowball effect. Okay. So there's some other things that we talked about. We're gonna continue working with the sheriff's office. I think they would be the first ones to tell you, we've worked with them really hard to, to help with some of the issues that's already been experienced on I-64 with the speeding. We have seen some, some, I say we, the sheriff's office has seen some pretty outrageous speeds within the project. We worked pretty hard to develop a plan to deploy the photo enforcement. And I applaud the county, I applaud the sheriff's office because really you guys did the major work to make that happen. So, so thank you, it's been a great benefit to the project. And I think it shows the good partnership that we've had, shows that you guys prioritize safety within the work zone, so does the sheriff's office. So I say that to say, we're gonna continue working with the sheriff's office about some type of opportunity or plan that might be out there to help manage some of the folks that are continuing to run, run that red light. Because again, it is illegal and it is enforceable by the sheriff's office. I also know that it is difficult to enforce. It is not an easy thing to be on one side of the bridge and, and follow someone who's just ran a red light because you just become part of the problem. So I, I totally understand that, but we're gonna work with them to see if there's any opportunities to partnership and, and rectify that. All right. So why, in a little bit more detail, is the bridge being replaced? Bridge was built in 1972. It is, again, it is structurally deficient. What does structurally deficient mean? According to, I'm moving on to the flyer if you wanna follow along. It means that it's, according to the National Bridge Inspection Standards, MBIS, condition ratings are used to describe an existing bridge or culvert, depending if it meets the certain threshold of a structure, compared with its condition as if it were new. We use a rating, this is nationally, a rating of zero to nine. Nine being perfect, brand-new bridge, straight off the press. I don't even wanna talk about what zero might be. Bridge isn't there, hole, right? There's a hole. So a four means that it is in poor condition and, and there, when it is a four, it is considered structurally deficient. So bridges are considered, what is structurally deficient? So I'm moving down a couple, couple ways. Bridges are considered structurally deficient if they have been restricted to light vehicles, closed to traffic, require or require rehabilitation. Again, so structurally deficient means there are elements of the bridge that need to be monitored and/or repaired. The fact that a bridge is structurally deficient, again, does not imply that it is likely to collapse or it is unsafe. It means the bridge must be monitored, inspected and maintained. So that's where we are with this bridge. It was identified as structurally deficient a few years ago. It got on our list for, as a structurally deficient bridge. We start seeking funding through the SGR, or State of Good Repair Program. It's a codified section of, of dedicated money, state money that goes to VDOT for maintaining bridges that are structurally deficient. So how is a structural, structural deficiency determined? The condition of different parts of a bridge is rated on a scale of zero to nine, I've already explained. Nine being excellent, zero being failed. So there are three parts of a bridge, at least in VDOT terms. You have the deck, which I think everybody knows, that's the riding surface that you drive on every day. And you have what we call the superstructure. The superstructure is everything below the deck, like the girders, the beams, the bearings, within, you know, a few feet of below that deck. And then finally, you have the substructure. That is, the substructure is your foundation, your supporting post, the piers. So those three elements of a bridge get rated as part of our inspection. So for this bridge, the deck was rated a five, so it's just above being structurally deficient. The substructure is rated a five, just above, structurally deficient. And the superstructure is rated a four. Again, that is your, your girders and things like that. So that is the piece that put this on the structurally deficient list. All right. I'll say it one more time. What makes a bridge structurally deficient and are structurally deficient bridges unsafe? Structurally deficient does not imply that it'll, it'll collapse. I can't say that enough. All right. I mentioned that the bridge was built in 1972. I also mentioned that when it becomes structurally deficient, it becomes eligible to receive SGR funds. Originally, this was intended to be a project that kicked off in construction. We, we had PE authorization, meaning you can start designing the project in 2023, about June, July of 2023. Original schedule had this project being completed somewhere, construction-wise, in the 2030 range, 2028, 29, 30. So what happened was there's no right-of-way, there was no utilities, and really, there was no grade work or roadway work associated with the project that needed to be completed. So it was really a bridge-only project. It's pretty a simp, a simple design. So what we were able to do was we already have I-64 going through this construction. There's already bridge work as part of that contract, meaning that they have the contracting ability to do bridge work. We said, is there an opportunity for us to accelerate this project to, to then bring it to the design builder as an opportunity to add to the gap? What that does, it allows us to finish to replace this structurally deficient bridge years in advance of what it was intended to do originally and a lot cheaper. You can imagine there are inflation, cost savings that we get as, not just as, as a state, but as taxpayers in general. We can deliver this project a whole lot cheaper. It saves, you know. So it's good for us as taxpayers, but also it gives us an opportunity to say, hey, we might have an extra 15, $20 million now to apply to another bridge that might also be structurally deficient. Because this is something that we, we are dealing with across the state. Structurally deficient bridges is not, you know, just a New Can, a New Can issue. So those were, those were some of the benefits of, of doing that, delivering it early, delivering it faster. I know that there are a lot of issues that folks are experiencing now with traffic, but I will also remind you that, you know, there could have been an opportunity where you go through the I-64 widening construction and a lot of impacts to traffic for multiple years. And then as soon as that's done, VDOT comes right back and says, here's a bridge that we're gonna replace, which, you know, you just have an extended period of, of traffic impacts. So, you know, I, I think that this ultimately was the right decision to go ahead and, and push this project forward. And the last thing I will say is, a great question, and it might come up, is why, why not add it to the, the DDI project? Right? And, and bundle it with that? And it's a good question. And the quiet, the frank answer is, when we went through this and we accelerated this project and we had, signed a contract with the design builder to add it to the scope of their work, there was no funded DDI project. There was, there was definitely a desire, but that DDI project got funded, I think it was about three months ago. Before that, that was, that was not a funded project, so.
Mr. Fraser, can you just real quick, the, can you just kinda explain to the public what that is real quick?
Yeah. Yeah, so DDI is a diverging diamond interchange. If anybody's familiar with Zion's Crossroads, that is a, a type of interchange control where you actually cross over to the opposite side of the road and to access the interstate. That project, that is a funded project in New Can County now, and it is, I think, about a $94 million project. So with that, again, doing things a little bit differently this evening. Happy to take any questions on that, happy to take any maintenance questions. That, I'm, I'm through.
Mr. Moyer?
Mr. Fraser, how are you?
I'm good.
We, we appreciate, you know, this explanation for 211. I, I think next time we could maybe talk about X-205 and, and see if we can get that straightened out. I, I think some of the, some of the ideas of making that a, that left turn to westbound, going northbound on 249, eliminating that and have people going just 60, may be, you know, a solution. I know myself, living in Patriots Landing and a lot of people in Patriots Landing, a lot of people in Five Lakes already do that. But it, it would eliminate that, that phasing, you know, of, of the length of time that, that, that right lane going westbound is closed. So that would be great. I noticed that we're almost done with the park-and-ride improvements on 60. That is constantly filled. I think there's probably a few people that use the Chico Hominy Family Practices parking lot too. And so that'll be a great addition when that, when that's done.
Yeah.
And I think we're done with paving in Five Lakes? We're pretty close to it?
I, I think we're pretty much, yeah, completed. I mean, most of our, our surface treatment work, our thin treatment, had completed a couple of weeks ago. So, I don't hold me to that. I didn't come with the.
I'd still like to have a, a middle line down Longview Road, but we'll talk about that another time. But thanks for all the, the trimming and all the, the secondary roads, that's gonna be a big deal for a lot of people. Thank you.
Good deal. Thank you, Mr. Moyer.
Ms. Pearson?
Mr. Fraser. Thank you so much for taking the time last week to talk about this. I, I really, really appreciate it. I would just like to say that hindsight is 2020 and I would like to apologize to the citizens of District 3 that I did not think to have you come out before now and explain this whole process and what it was likely going to entail. So we learn from our mistakes. I would encourage you, if you are going to have something to this magnitude, to do that, to come out and speak to the citizens beforehand, before it, because it was a real big shock to everybody. So, but I take responsibility for that. I should have thought of that and had a community meeting, so. But I appreciate you coming out, and I appreciate all that VDOT does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Steers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Fraser, I am not going to sit here and give you any suggestions on what to do. Because I think you've had enough suggestions, okay? And you're going to get more and more and more, so I'm not even going to talk about I-64. A little road called Eastview Lane in Providence Forest, they're having a grand opening there next week for a new business opening. And I know you committed to widening and repaving the road. Do you have any kind of update yet?
So I'll be honest, Mr. Steers, I didn't come with a grand update for that, but I will be happy to get an update, and I can send it to yourself, and I'll copy Mr. Hathaway on it, because you're right. You've called me, and we've talked a little bit about that. It was a commitment that we made. It's a very short road. It's about, I don't even want to say how wide it is.
It's thirteen feet wide.
Yeah, it's pretty narrow. So I do know that my area headquarters has got that on their docket, so would be happy to provide an update after the meeting.
Okay, I appreciate that. And the only other thing is, I don't know if you call it an island marker, the marker in the median there at the intersection of sixty and Courthouse Road. It was taken out yesterday, some vehicle.
And it's in the center median?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So just let you know. Other than that, thanks for all you do, and I hope you get some sleep at night. Thank you.
I got a four and a two-year-old, so yeah, I need all the luck I can get.
Ms. Stewart?
Mr. Fraser, thank you very much for that very thorough explanation. I actually had two residents that are watching at home text me during your presentation and say, wow, this guy's great. Thank him for me. So, thank you on behalf of the residents of District Five that maybe never even go on 106. So, thank you for that firstly. And secondly, thank you for having the wash fixed at Holly Fork Road. That was huge. I know Ms. Pearson and I both received calls asking for it to be fixed, and I'm very appreciative that it is fixed. And I know Mr. Smith and I talked about the mowing on Holly Fork Road, but you said the secondary mowing is happening soon. I know residents have been in between the first and second, mowing it themselves, because I know visibility is quite an issue. So thank you for already addressing that. And then the only question I had for you was, did anyone have a chance to look at in the last few days the ditching in Chico Hominy Shores? I know I just contacted you at the very end of the week last week, so.
Not yet.
Okay, perfect. I trust it's on the list. So thank you in advance for that.
So I just want to add one little piece. You mentioned folks cutting the grass on their own, which we always appreciate. If there's ever a site distance issue, feel free, folks put in a work order, that 1-800 number that's on the FAQ, it works for maintenance issues as well. You know, we do mow three times a year primaries, twice a year for secondary, but if we hear that there is a site distance issue at a public intersection, we're more than happy to deploy some of our resources out there to address it, because that's what we would consider a safety need. So.
Good to know, thank you. I'll add that to my pothole dispatching stuff that I share with residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. I thought it was a very good update this evening. This might be more for Mr. Hathaway. I think you were copied, I hope you were copied on the Cross Mill Road. Is there any update on where we're at with that? I think we're not, VDOT's not holding us up on that. I think that's Verizon, just for the public out there.
No, actually, we've completed the survey. The survey submitted, been submitted to the Planning Department. We've gotten comments back. There's two properties that will need to apply for a, well, they'll need to go before the BZA for an exception to the setback requirements. And the Platts can't be approved until that process has taken place. We've been working with the property owners to get their BZA applications in. We've received one, we're still, oh, we have two now. All right. So we'll be scheduling BZA meetings soon.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fraser. Have a good evening.
All right, you, too. Thank you.
We have three presentations this evening. Our first one is the proclamation recognizing October 5th through 11th, 2025, as National 4-H Week. And an update on 4-H activities. This presentation will be presented by Ms. Stewart and the Extension Unit Coordinator, James Mason, Jr.
Do you want me to do the presentation first and then update or present?
We have a stress check.
That's my life. All right. Whereas this year's National 4-H Week theme, Beyond Ready, reminds us that 4-H is building a ready generation in a world of change and equips young people with skills for the future while meeting them where they are today. And whereas 4-H is America's largest youth development organization, supporting six million youth across this country. And whereas 4-H programs are delivered by the Cooperative Extension System, a community of more than 100 public land-grant colleges and universities across the nation that provide experiences for young people to learn by doing. And whereas 4-H is in every city and county in the United States and helps six million youth become engaged, successful, and independent. And whereas 4-H connects young people and adults to their communities, preparing them for work and life through experiential and inquiry-based learning while providing emerging research for positive youth development. And whereas, expanding from its strong agricultural roots, 4-H helps young people explore the world around them and grow into productive adults. And whereas, supporting future leaders in science, agriculture, and community leadership is an important imperative for the U.S. Department of Agriculture, National Institute of Food and Agriculture 4-H Program. And now therefore, it be proclaimed that the New Kent County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim October 5th through 11th, 2025, as National 4-H Week in New Kent County, and encourages citizens to recognize 4-H for its significant impact it has made and continues to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead for a lifetime.
Good evening. My name is Shia Lerner. I'm fifteen years old, and I currently serve as a Southeast District 4-H Ambassador for the state of Virginia. I come from a 4-H family, and I have been officially involved in 4-H for the past four years. When my family first arrived in New Kent County, we were surprised to find there was no active 4-H club. Most youth I spoke with had never heard of 4-H. Those who had didn't really know what it was about. That experience stirred something in me. I felt personally compelled to change that, to help bring 4-H to life in our county. In 2023, my family founded a livestock and poultry 4-H club right on our farm with the goal of offering exceptional opportunities for youth in our area. Thanks to the incredible support of our extension agent, Mr. James Mason, who is one of the most passionate and dedicated individuals we've worked with, our club has flourished. Since then, our members have proudly earned multiple titles at the 2024 Virginia State Fair and brought home ribbons and awards from the 2025 Southeast District Contest, hosted right here at New Kent High School. Beyond competition, we've also carried out local outreach events and fundraisers, giving back to our community and showing the public what 4-H is all about. 4-H is more than a program. It's a community. It's a place where youth can grow through hands-on learning, healthy competition, scholarships, college, and life skill readiness, lasting friendships, and mentorship. For many of us, 4-H is like a second home, filled with people who become family. On behalf of myself and fellow 4-Hers, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for supporting 4-H and giving it a place in New Kent County. In honor of the upcoming National 4-H Week, October 5th through the 11th, I respectfully propose that the official 4-H flag be flown at the New Kent Visitor Center at exit two eleven. This public display would show both residents and travelers that New Kent County invests in its youth and values programs that create strong, capable leaders. In addition, I propose that 4-H programming be offered throughout our local school system, providing in-school opportunities for students to get involved. Research shows that youth who participate in 4-H are more academically successful, more engaged in their communities, and more prepared for life beyond high school. I would also love the opportunity to speak at New Kent High School about 4-H. I believe it's important for students to hear from their peers, someone their own age who can share what 4-H is really like and know it can impact their lives. When youth talk to youth, that message often becomes more personal, more relatable, and more inspiring. Over the past two years, two of our own New Kent 4-Hers were elected to represent the Southeast District of Virginia, in honor selected from across 21 counties. That speaks volume about the quality of leadership being developed right here in our community. I've seen firsthand how life-changing 4-H can be, not just for me, but for so many others. It's more than agriculture or projects. It's about confidence, character, and growth. In every way, 4-H is beyond ready to serve our community and support the next generation of leaders. Thank you for your time, your support, and your thoughtful consideration of these proposals.
Good evening, board. I just wanted to take this moment just to say thank you to all of you who have supported, visited our camp, or did anything of that nature, dealing with 4-H camp or 4-H in general. Just wanted to announce that we are looking to start new clubs as usual. We're looking forward to any volunteers or any assistance or locations that we can hold these things as well. So if you have any ideas or anything of that nature, you have my contact information, please just email it to me if you know somebody passionate, whether it's underwater basket weaving or photography. So I'm trying to push all these programs out. So thank you all. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Obviously, you're doing a good job, and you honestly have a bright future ahead of you. You did a great job this evening. You should be proud. What do we have to do to get the flag? I think we can.
I'll take care of that tomorrow.
Our next presentation is the proclamation recognizing October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and Thrive Virginia Community Action Agenda Update. Ms. Pearson?
Okay, this proclamation is to make October 2025 Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, and income levels. And whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects over four million Americans each year. And whereas one in three Americans has witnessed an incident of domestic violence. And whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity. And whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on this eighth day of September, 2025, the New Kent County Board of Supervisors does proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourages the citizens of New Kent County to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, and thank you for delivering the proclamation for your support of Thrive Virginia and the work that we do. My name is Carmina Galvez, and I am Education Specialist. This is Ava Pearson, the Child Counselor for New Kent, Charles City, and West Point. We are here to speak to you for a few minutes about the work that Thrive Virginia is doing in New Kent County.
So Thrive Virginia is a community action agency dedicated to fighting poverty. As such, our work involves supporting survivors of domestic violence. On average, in the U.S., nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United, well, in the United States. During one year, this equates to more than 10 million people. One in three women and one in four men have experienced some form of physical violence by an intimate partner. One in seven women and one in 25 men have been injured by an intimate partner. One in 10 women have been raped by an intimate partner. On a typical day, there are more than 20,000 phone calls placed to domestic violence hotlines nationwide. Intimate partner violence accounts for 15% of all violent crime. The presence of a gun in a domestic violence situation increases the risk of homicide by 500%. If an individual has reported being strangled by their intimate partner, they are 10 times more likely to be killed by them.
In the fiscal year 2025, Thrive Virginia served 27 individuals in New Kent County that have been affected by domestic violence, 19 adults, eight children. Of this total, nine people received hotline services, 15 people received assistance with basic needs, 10 people received housing services, and 15 people received financial assistance. As a result of the domestic violence, these individuals experienced three sustained injuries that required medical attention, eight missed work or school days, five had a loss of income or financial security, seven had to relocate or become unhoused, and five reported strangulation.
And everything we just mentioned are just the statistics that have been reported. There are many that go unreported. This information can be shattering, as the reality of domestic violence can affect multiple areas in someone's life. It's because of the multifaceted nature of the issue that our team works hard to provide comprehensive education and trauma-informed care to survivors of domestic violence. The work our team completed in the last fiscal year has empowered clients with the knowledge to identify red flags, set boundaries based on healthy communication and relationships, and even leave their abusive environments when they experience barriers to their physical and mental health. But our job is not done. Rates of unreported incidents show that the issue of domestic violence is still an ongoing battle. According to the Bureau of Justice Statistics, 48% of domestic violence crimes go unreported. This increases when we consider sexual violence as well. Because of these numbers, spreading awareness in our community about the support and assistance available to survivors is crucial. Our team uses various community outreach events in addition to providing counseling, court advocacy, financial planning, and housing guidance to combat the stigma of staying silent.
To honor the importance of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we have scheduled some events and activities within the community, and we encourage everyone interested to share these events, if not attend. Thrive Virginia is exploring the option of collaborating with New Kent schools to host youth-friendly activities during all lunch hours. This event would include interactive activities aimed to foster healthier communication styles between students and their peers, family members, teachers, and other people. We're also hosting a Purple Photo Partnership Social Media Challenge, where we welcome community members of New Kent County to wear purple, take a selfie, and post your photo on social media with the hashtag DVAM for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and mention Thrive Virginia on our Facebook page. The person who, we will receive, we will choose a winner randomly, and they will receive a prize. Thank you so much for your time and attention this evening. We look forward to working with New Kent County to help raise awareness for domestic violence this October. We also just placed some domestic violence information brochures and more information about Thrive Virginia Services near the entrance on the table. And we also have purple pins in a basket as well for anyone who would like to pick up a pin for October. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all you do for New Kent and around the counties. Our last presentation this evening is the National Opioid Settlement. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. We've recently been notified by the Attorney General's Office of a national opioid settlement of approximately $720 million. The Attorney General has sent out us a draft resolution, which we have prepared for you this afternoon to take action on. That resolution. That resolution would authorize either the county attorney or myself to execute all required participation documents if the county is to join in on that settlement. $720 million sounds like a lot of money, but this is a national settlement, so that will be divided through all the localities throughout the nation. But the amount of money each state receives is based on the participants of the localities within that state. So it is the Attorney General's goal that every locality in the Commonwealth signs up and participates as part of this settlement. This settlement is against 8 opioid manufacturers: AlvoGen, Amneal, Apotex, Hikma, Endevior, Mylan, Sun, and Zitis. Not familiar with those names, but those are the companies that are involved in this settlement, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hathaway?
I just know that there was one of the companies that was not listed was the Slacker Family. That was the...we weren't on that list. Is there any reason why we didn't make that list?
We will be on the final list to sign up for that particular settlement, which is what was approved at our previous meeting. Our localities have until September 30th to sign up to be part of that. So we have submitted our documentation for that.
Anyone else? None, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to adopt Resolution R-29-25, approving the county's participation in the proposed direct settlement of opioid-related claims.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye. Motion passes.
We have four public hearings this evening. Our first one tonight is Application ZM-01-25, Ordinance O-16-25, rezoning economic opportunity to industrial, the Manhattan New Kent LLC. Mr. Silvio?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and good evening, members of the board. Again, my name is Patrick Silva, Principal Planner with the Department of Community Development's Planning Division, here again this evening to provide an overview of the rezoning request submitted by Scott Miller on behalf of Matten New Kent LLC to rezone a 281.9 acre parcel identified as Tax Map 32A-1 from Economic Opportunity to Industrial. So a little context first. The intent behind this specific rezoning is to expand upon the uses which are already allowed by right in the Economic Opportunity Zone, such as warehouses and distribution centers, while shifting away from the smaller-scale retail and individual consumer-level uses traditionally associated with a business-style zoning designation. So for example, several uses, again, commonly associated with distributing and warehousing, including trucking and freight terminals, are not permitted by right at all, nor via CUP in Economic Opportunity Zone, while they are permitted by right to be developed in the industrial zone. So about the rezoning process a little bit, Article 20 of the county code provides for a more flexible and adaptable method of zoning by which an applicant is able to request for a change in a parcel's existing zoning through a conditional rezoning. So as part of this process, a zoning classification may be allowed to be changed to another, subject to certain conditions proffered by the zoning applicant for the protection of the community, and these would be sort of conditions of approval that are not typically applicable to land that is similarly zoned. So proffers such as those offered by the applicant in this case, so I won't go into them too much individually and too much detail, but if you do have any questions, let me know. So proffers such as those offered by the applicant in this case, which are up on the screen here, are intended to mitigate any of the potentially undesirable impacts which have the potential to emerge as the result of the proposed rezoning. So with the context of the rezoning and the proffers provided by the applicant in mind, I would like to say that the county is supportive of the proposed rezoning largely due to the property's existing by-right development potential, but there are a number of important considerations relating to the request that I would like to highlight as part of this So an important one of note is traffic. As we all heard earlier this evening, traffic is not anybody's favorite subject and is of great concern. So regarding traffic impacts, the Traffic Impact Memorandum provided by the applicant with their application shows that the proposed rezoning from Economic Opportunity to Industrial would actually work to decrease the overall traffic volume potential, with standard vehicle trip potential and the industrial zoning designation being significantly lower when compared to that of the Economic Opportunity Designation, and heavy vehicle trips...heavy vehicle trip potential, rather, remaining relatively the same between economic development and industrial designations. Furthermore, both the county's Department of Transportation Development and the Virginia Department of Transportation did review the rezoning application and Traffic Impact Memorandum, and acknowledged that the traffic projection methodology and conclusions that were reached by the applicant were sound. An additional point of note in their review of the rezoning request, the Department of Public Utilities did comment on the need to account for water availability in relation to future development in the Tallysville area, just to ensure that adequate water service can continue to be provided. And as such, as part of the proffer statement that was provided by the applicant, some of the...one of these proffers addresses uses that would be prohibited from being developed at the site, and a big part of the uses that are considered on this list are uses that are both deemed to be water-usage-intensive and generally incompatible with existing and envisioned future development in relative proximity to the subject site. So again, the applicant has proffered out these uses from being developed at this site in order to kind of address some of those water concerns. So another point of note, in the fire department's review of this application, fire staff did comment on the potential impacts of a rezoning to industrial, and how the proliferation of industrial uses may lead to higher rates of worker injury related to things like fire, explosion potential, that sort of thing, in this sort of more industrial setting, and generally has other possible public safety implications. Now, staff believes that due to the significant overlap of by-right uses in both the Economic Opportunity and Industrial zoning designations, so again, warehousing and distribution centers are already permitted to be developed by right in the Economic Opportunity Designation, and because of that, a change to the industrial zoning designation is unlikely to encourage the substantial proliferation of such uses beyond what would otherwise be the case under the existing zoning designation. However, to assist in managing a potential increase in public safety demand, the applicant has also proffered a voluntary contribution of $10,000 to the county to be used for general fire and rescue purposes. And finally, some planning considerations of note. While the county's comprehensive plan currently designates the future land use of this given subject site to be Economic Opportunity, planning staff does believe the rezoning request is appropriate for a number of reasons. So foremost, the request technically represents a downzoning or rezoning from a more intensive zoning designation, in this case Economic Opportunity, to a less intensive zoning designation, in this case industrial. And therefore, impacts including traffic and overall development density are anticipated to be less than if the site were to be developed under the existing Economic Opportunity Designation. In addition, the subject site is contiguous to several similarly sized tracts of existing industrially-zoned land, and thus would not represent a spot rezoning that would result in a parcel of isolated zoning designation relative to what is around it. So instead, an industrial zoning designation would keep with the character of existing and envision future development of adjacent parcels. So with the aforementioned considerations in mind, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request, subject to the proffers outlined in the proffer statement provided by the applicant dated September 5th. And likewise, at their August 18th meeting, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward a favorable recommendation of approval for the rezoning request to the board. So I did also want to take a quick moment to introduce Mick Rizley and Matthew Roberts from the applicant team, who will tell you a little bit more about the project from the applicant's side of things.
Thank you, Patrick. My name is Mick Rizley with Matten Companies. We're located at 4600 Wedgewood Boulevard in Frederick, Maryland. So a little bit about us, we have 7 million square feet of currently existing portfolio product, 2 million square feet under construction, 4 million planned, and 15 million available in the pipeline. Can I zoom in on that? Is it possible? No? Okay. We've been around since the '70s, family-owned and operated. A few million in capital floating around right now, but ready to invest, and we are happy to be in New Kent. So these are our highlighted projects. Wanted to point out the ones particularly in Virginia: Northlake in Hanover, Crossroads in Stafford, Dulles North in Sterling, and Parkway in Manassas. And what you'll see here is a fairly uniform building facade. We utilize tilt-up construction, and we try and prioritize presentation and landscaping and make it the best-looking industrial product that we can, and try and be consistent with what we deliver. We primarily have warehouse and industrial tenants. We do have some life science as well, and general business. As far as community service, whenever we enter a new market, we try and engage with economic development and local charities, and become a philanthropic partner in the community, and that will occur here as well. We plan on being involved in the community. Community sustainability, so we try and use the most up-to-date construction standards possible and products to allow for the most green impact we can. Again, we prioritize green area and native landscaping to minimize our stormwater impacts. The subject site you see here, the pink is a developable area, green is existing wetlands and RPA, which we are avoiding, and then the blue is existing right-of-way dedication. So here you see our proximity to the proposed Divergent Diamond, the existing Autozone, and the target distribution center. To note here, our entrance onto City Center Court will be a right-in, right-out, so all of our traffic will be pushed towards the interstate. There's really no reason for anyone to head south, so there should not be a great impact to traffic on this roadway. And with that, I'll turn over to Matt for the proffers. If there's any questions at the end, happy to answer them. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Matt Roberts with Herschler. Again, on behalf of Matt, and thank you all for having us this evening. Many thanks to staff for their positive recommendation, all the help on the application. We're also happy to be here, as Patrick mentioned, with the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval. And so just to be brief and maybe take a step back, Patrick's stolen a lot of my thunder, and I appreciate him doing that in such a great manner. As Patrick mentioned, the purpose of this application, again, is to really take some of those additional industrial uses that are available in the I District, not the EO District, and maintaining compatibility ultimately with the county's planning, but again, removing some of those less compatible uses in the EO District, things like shopping centers, things such as that. And again, that has the ultimate effect of reducing traffic in the area, as Patrick mentioned. We've also worked very closely with staff to proffer out, as you'll see here in a moment, again, those incompatible uses, but also the high-water and sewer uses, as there's only so much capacity allocated to the Tallysville area under the county's current plans. But ultimately, we do believe that this rezoning is going to help promote the county's comprehensive planning goals for the area, specifically in terms of, you know, new industrial, commercial development that Matten can bring to the site. That ultimately helps the citizens of the county by expanding the tax base through those additional uses. So Patrick has mentioned to you the proffers. Again, we're not going to go through all of them. Happy to answer any questions about them, but I did want to highlight a couple of them for you that we think are important. Proffer 2 on your screen and in the packet in front of you describes substantial conformance with the developable area plan that was on a few slides earlier, that effectively means that what you see is what you're going to get in terms of the site infrastructure development specifically. Proffer 3 sort of tags along with that in terms of defining what the maximum amount of developable area could be by, you know, getting it to simply the 184 developable acres on-site, retaining the RPA's largely in other buffer areas. Just a step ahead, you know, Patrick also mentioned we are going to be proffering out a number of uses. Again, not going to go through the entire list, but just to highlight, this is an effort that we went through with staff, and specifically DPU, to speak to a number of those water-intensive uses, things such as meat processing, slaughterhouses, construction landfills and salvage yards, cement and brick manufacturing, waste transfer stations, things that just simply, you know, did not seem to fit with the current development and proposed development in this area, as the county has seen it in the comprehensive plan. Last two, just to highlight for you, proffer 8 there speaks to the necessary water...I'm sorry, wastewater pump station for the site, and that's something that Matten is going to be developing themselves, and will ultimately dedicate that facility at no cost to the county and no cost to the citizens. So effectively, you know, this application is going to be paying for itself in terms of the wastewater infrastructure necessary to support it. And last but not least, proffer 9, just in terms of that contribution for fire and rescue purposes. Again, as Patrick mentioned, a lot of conversations with staff and going through the fire chief in terms of that discussion. End of the day, EO and I, in terms of the overlap in the warehousing, not a significant difference between those two, but nonetheless, we understand the fire chief's concern about overall readiness for those types of uses as the county has planned for them, and to that end, Matten will be making a $10,000 contribution prior to the first certificate of occupancy, so the first opportunity for someone to enter into the site. So with that, we're certainly happy to answer any questions that the board may have, and we certainly appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions before we open the public hearing? Might have some questions for you after the public hearing.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Has anyone signed up to speak this evening? No one signed up? I will close the public hearing. Any questions for staff or representatives from Matten? I know Ms. Pearson and I met with some of you a while back. I know staff has been working with you for months. Understand it's been a really good process. I appreciate all the work that y'all have put in, and I appreciate all the work staff has put in. I really feel like this could be a good project to go along with all the other businesses that are on the 106 corridor, so. Mr. Moyer?
I'm the representative of the board on the Planning Commission, so I've heard the discussions for the second time, and the Planning Commission looked at...they questioned the traffic and that, just like, you know, Mr. Silva talked about, and realized that it's a better situation than it would have been if it would have been EO, because EO can mean, like you said, shopping center, multiple housing, and other things like that. So this is a much better situation for that, and I appreciate all that you're going to do in the future for our community. Thank you.
And a good charity that when y'all come is the New Kent Education Foundation. They're always looking for donations.
Mr. Chair?
They have a big bowl of thon.
Mr. Chair, I also saw the YMCA up there.
Yeah, I did. If there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to adopt Ordinance O-16-25R1, Application ZM-01-25, to rezone approximately 289.1 acres of Tax Map parcel number 32A-1, GPINI13-0958-4889, from EO Economic Opportunity to IND, Industrial.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Ms. Watkins, poll the members.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye. Motion passes. Next public hearing is the Water and Sewer Revenue Bonds, Series 2025, Resolution R-30-25R1. Mr. Bush from Sands Anderson. Yep.
Good evening, members of the board. Jesse Bausch, Sands Anderson. We serve as bond counsel to the county. We have...you have before you a resolution following the public hearing to consider water and sewer revenue bonds. This is...what's proposed is an application through the VRA pool... This is, what's proposed is an application through the VRA pool, which you guys have used for, you know, a number of the other water and sewer loans. Whenever the county does water and sewer debt, we have to do a public hearing, because these are bonds that would be secured by water and sewer revenues. But also, you know, in some of the structures that we have, there's also a support agreement by the county of potentially other funds. What was advertised was, I think, a total of 20, 25 million, 27,500, and we've had a number of discussions with county staff, including county administrator, finance, and utilities, as to kind of exactly, you know, what the scope of this project, this project is going to be. We know there's a bunch of projects, and Trip can probably speak to this in more detail. There's a number of projects that we're already obligated on, that we know we have to do. There's a whole bunch of other projects in the pipeline, some of which are, you know, to be advertised, being advertised in the next couple of months. So we know there's a pretty substantial need within this fiscal year. But there's also been some discussion is, how much of that stuff are we ready to go on right now? Do we want to wait until the spring? So we've had a number of discussions about all those sorts of things. So there's been a, you know, a range of discussions as to, you know, do we do this full 25, 26 to kind of cover everything now? Do we figure out what's more immediate needs, and that's maybe more like a 15 or 16 million dollar number? But that's, you know, we, we can, Davenport is here, and staff is here, and we can kind of talk all about those things, but that's, you know, that's been an ongoing discussion amongst the entire team over the last month or two, and, you know, obviously, that's part of the discussion for the board tonight, is do you guys want to do this tonight? Do you want to do some of it tonight? We can do, I mean, I think for planning purposes, as long as we can do it within this fiscal year, I think we can probably get to where we need to be. The spring VRA pool would be within this fiscal year, it'd be right by the end of the fiscal year, but we'd be getting those funds to the county in that sort of end of May, early June timeframe. So that's kind of the high level discussion. I'm happy to, you know, Davenport guys are here, you know, Trip is, you know, we can certainly kind of discuss the universe.
Yeah, I might just add, like he mentioned, we advertised up to 27 and a half million. That was sort of the high end of the range we've been discussing. I don't know, Mr. Hathaway, if you have any thoughts on what the amount would be, but really what we're working with here is that the VRA pool requires action be taken by September 19th. So if you are to participate in the fall pool, that would have to happen tonight or at a special meeting in the next two weeks.
So I guess my question is, if we hold off till the spring, how's it going to affect some of the project? Mr. Steers might have, like, I think the Brickshire Water Tower is kind of the biggest project. Am I right on that?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Well, as far as impact to timing, if we held off to spring, and speaking with our department, our Director of Public Utilities, we would like to go ahead and put the Brickshire Tank out to bed now. The engineering is almost complete, and as soon as it's complete, we'd like to put that out to bed. That way, when we come back to the spring to borrow, we'll know exactly how much money we need to borrow, and then we'll be ready to go. As soon as we complete that borrowing, we'll be ready to move forward with construction. So that is something that our Director of Public Utilities has, has recommended in speaking with me.
I concur. Totally agree. Thank you.
So, yeah, if that's your preference, you don't have to take action on anything tonight. That will all come back in the spring, so.
I guess I still need to open the public hearing.
No.
We'll have to.
Not if you're not going to take action on it.
I mean, you can do it either way. I mean, I would recommend to do it just in case.
Well, can I ask a question too? Sorry, Mr. Chair. What, is there any negative effect of waiting until the spring? What?
So there's really two considerations here. One is cash flows, which Trip could probably speak to better than I could, on, within the fiscal year. We know that a borrowing needs to take place during this current fiscal year, but the actual monthly cash flows is something that he might be able to speak to a little bit more. So that's one consideration, is are you able to float this until May, June? The other one would just be the market. You, you could lock in interest rates now, or you'd be waiting until the spring. Think the general expectation in the market is that rates will come down, but we don't know that that's going to happen. Anything could happen in the next six to eight months, and that's really just speculation either way.
Okay. Thank you.
If you want to know anything more about the cash flows, I would say we should talk to Trip.
We're not going to go broke in between now and May. Okay.
A real quick summary, just on kind of the traditional way that everything moves for us, because we haven't had as much forward movement with large projects, there's usually a dip at the end of September where all our bond payments come up, and then a dip at the end of the year when we do our transfers over to the Bottoms Bridge Service District to cover that debt service as well. So usually, we stay slightly climbing with these new projects ongoing. We'll see, you know, probably a little bit lower, but there's also some bond revenue that'll come in, or bond proceeds that'll come in and offset that decline a little bit, plus there was an increase on rates this year, and we can, we could probably look at timing for some of those projects that are under contract but aren't shovel in the ground to ease that burden if need be. So overall cash flow, I think we're going to be okay if we need to wait until the spring.
If you're not concerned, I'm not concerned.
Good.
So what do you think, Mr. Hathaway?
If Jesse thinks we should have the public hearing, have the public hearing. I'm not sure anybody's going to speak, so.
Anybody signed up? All right, no one signed up? I'll close the public hearing. We will not be taking any action tonight on that item. Our next public hearing is proposed option and lease agreement with the Towers LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Before you, you have a proposed lease with the Towers LLC, and that is for the county to lease approximately 10,000 square feet to the Towers LLC behind our refuse and recycling center located on Route 647, referred to, referred to as the Old Telegraph Road refuse site. The location, as shown on the map, would be adjacent to the site, just on the backside of the current refuse center. The proposed lease, okay. The agreement that you have before you actually is two agreements. One is an option agreement, and then one is a lease agreement. Both would be executed at the same time, but the option agreement is what starts the due diligence period. By adopting the lease agreement today, by approving the lease agreement today, that is not approving the construction of a cell tower, and that's the purpose of this lease, is to construct a cell tower to serve the Lenexa area. The applicant, the Towers LLC, will still need, be required to file for, and submit an application for a conditional use permit for authorization to build the tower, which I know some of that due diligence work is underway now. There will be, through the conditional use permit, opportunities for the public to speak through another public hearing that will be required. During that public hearing, there will be renderings of the actual towers. Actually, there, we also require a probation study to be conducted, and those results would be shared, which would show the reach of the service from that tower. We also require a balloon study as part of the conditional use permit, so residents will be able to see the visibility of the tower from different, I guess, locations in the area. So there definitely will be opportunities for additional public input before the communications tower is constructed. The proposed lease for this, actually, there is a $2,500 fee that would be paid by the Towers LLC for the option agreement, and after the due diligence period, if we move to the lease period, there would be a lease of $6,500 per year. Also, starting with the second carrier on that tower, there would be an additional $75 per month paid per additional carrier on the tower. And I know that does not sound like a lot of money. And going through this process, the goal was not the money. The goal was to provide better service to the residents in the Lenexa area, where we've noticed that service is an issue. Areas like Rockahawk, Ed Allen's Campground, you'll be struggling to get one bar in many locations over there. So we see this as, as a necessity for public safety and just service for, for the residents that reside in that area. This time, I'd be happy to answer any questions. A representative from the Towers LLC is here to share any information that that company may have, Ms. Rancy Yates. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'll open the public hearing first. Anyone signed up?
Yeah.
No one signed up? I'll close the public hearing. Any questions for Mr. Hathaway? Comments?
Just one question, Mr. Hathaway. During the conditional use permit study process, do they do studies? So I'm asking because we just built a tower that's basically in my yard, and I know when the towers are close, if they overlap, it creates a dead zone. So I don't know if this tower is too close to the one that was just built. So would that, the studies done during that process, would that determine, be determined at that point?
Yes, that, that's what the probation study is. It looks at other towers in the area, and it shows, you'll see a map of their reach. So you'll be able to see what dead zones currently exist, and what, if any, would exist with the new tower being constructed.
Okay, thank you. And.
Mr. Moore?
Will, we be able to rent some space to the top for Sheriff's Department?
I'm glad you brought that up.
Thank you.
What is included in the lease agreement, the Towers LLC is required to reserve dedicated space for the county, so yes.
Is it just one spot, though?
One spot. And it's the standard 10-foot spot on the tower.
That $2,500 option does not go against the rent, correct? Wait, I read it.
That is correct.
Yeah. So we go with the public hearing. Ms. Stewart and I spoke with the applicant, and if I'm speaking out of terms to it, we're going to bring it back to our work session and get a few follow-up questions or concerns from the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Our last public hearing this evening is the employee bonuses of the emergency communications employees. Mr. Lawrence, our finance director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The ordinance you have in front of you tonight is to authorize monetary bonus for certain eligible county employees, subject to Virginia Code Section 15 dot 2 dash 1508. It requires us to adopt an ordinance to pay out monetary bonuses to certain employees. As Ms. Pearson mentioned earlier, this is part of a larger grant that is issued by the Virginia Department of Emergency Management through the NG 911 Grant Fund. The bonuses, which are for recruitment and retention, make up under a third of the entire grant award. The remainder of it is for training and equipment purposes. This would be eligible for both full-time and part-time folks, and I believe that the payment would probably be dependent upon staffing currently, and the sheriff would be able to answer that a little bit better than I would, as far as where they are on that at the moment, but I am happy to answer any other questions you may have. Oh, and this is 100% state fund, so no local dollars involved.
Thank you. First, open the public hearing. Anyone signed up?
No.
No one signed up? I'll close the public hearing. Board members, any questions, comments for Mr. Lawrence?
Mr. Chair, I have questions. So this is for existing employees also, correct?
Yes, it is for both recruitment and retention. The exact split, I am not entirely aware of.
But these employees also just received a bonus that other county employees did not get, correct?
Correct. That was through the comp board, well, partially through the comp board. Yes, ma'am.
I just, the communications department is extremely important to the county, don't get me wrong here, but there's many, many county employees that didn't receive a bonus at all. So I'm afraid that the perception is that, you know, the morale might suffer with the other employees in the county. So what, do we know, the full-time sign-on bonus is $2,500, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And do we know how much the bonuses were approximately for the existing employees?
So that varies upon a couple of different items, obviously, their, their salaries last year, and then.
And it's based on a percentage?
Yes, ma'am.
And how many employees are they, there in dispatch right now?
Current staffing.
With the public safety pay plan that was adopted last year, our starting salary did not increase for communications. The only thing that was adjusted was their years of service. So if you had a dispatcher that had been there five years of service, they moved to where they would be for five years on the scale. They did not receive the bonus, they did not receive the 5% that the county received. They just received what the pay plan adjustment called for. This same grant was actually also done, it was either last year or a year before, where it was $2,500 for full-time employees. It was also something that could be used as we were trying to recruit new candidates, that we were allowed to offer them a $2,500 one-time bonus, and for part-timers, it was a $1,200 or $1,250 bonus. And that's what would be, look to be pushed through again as well. We currently have three vacant positions in communications. We are trying to fill those. We have had applications, we've gone through interviews, but they have not completed the background process at this point.
And I understand, too, the perception that if you give somebody a sign-on bonus and you don't take care of your current employees, I understand that that would be an issue also. So I did, I was not aware, though, that they did not get a bump in pay when, with the new pay plan.
They just got the adjustment, so if they were tenured based on their years of service. So they did not get the normal, or the increase that all county employees got.
Right, okay. Thanks for the clarification.
But they are, you know, our dispatches are, we're pretty competitive now.
That was the reason that we didn't adjust the starting salary, because we were competitive with some. We're still below some others, but we were at the top range of some of the other jurisdictions. So that was why the starting salary did not adjust for communications.
Okay. Thanks, Sheriff. Any other?
Just one more question. So I guess, when we're creating the budget, is it possible that we can find out what grants are being applied for at that time?
Yes, ma'am.
Keep us updated on what grants are being applied for?
We.
Think that might help us make better decisions during the budget process?
Of course. We, we're in the process of kicking off our 27 budget process now, so we will work that into the operating side of the world and really focus in on that.
And maybe like a quarterly update on what grants are being applied for?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Moore?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt ordinance O-17-25, authorizing monetary bonuses for eligible county employees.
Thank you, Mr. Mooreier. Ms. Watkins, poll the members.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Mooreier?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, our elected officials reports. I'll start with you, Ms. Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two things quickly. Just want to extend my thanks and appreciation to both our public safety teams, law enforcement and fire and rescue. I know we're coming off of a very busy summer and I appreciate just your diligence, your patience and your effort to keep me informed, not only of what's happening in District 5, but just generally what's happening. It's very helpful to have that knowledge when residents, without a doubt, will contact me and say, "I saw this on Facebook. What's going on?" So I appreciate that very much and I'm hoping for a slower fall for y'all. And secondly, Ms. Phillips stated during public comment that we are having a meeting with the Chickahominy Indian Tribe tomorrow. That's myself and Mr. Hathaway. We are going to talk with them because we are in the very beginning stages of planning for McHemmy Woods. As Mr. Smith knows, we are just getting this off the ground. And we have done nothing more than explore very preliminarily what's in the realm of the possible. So we plan to include, I think everyone is in agreement, let me know if you're not, all stakeholders in this that have an interest in McHemmy Woods, including the Chickahominy Tribe. But I look forward to that meeting tomorrow, getting a chance to talk with them and share a little bit about what we're thinking and hear what they're thinking. But other than that, that's all I have. Mr. Chair?
Ms. Steers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Last Thursday, I was honored to welcome the New Kent University participants and was with Ms. Watkins and Ms. Yutzi. And when they put on a program, they put on a first-class program. Well-received. And also, Ms. Pearson came by and she spoke to the group. So she got to see all the people that were here. Old School Ciderie is opening in Providence Forge on September 13th and 14th, grand opening. If you don't know where it is, on Highway 60 across from the Ace Hardware Store. It's an old, old school that was converted into a ciderie supposedly selling only Virginia cideries and Virginia beer, which I don't know any of those brands, but she does. Also, yesterday, I was at the First Presbyterian Church in Providence Forge. They opened up their food bank. And, I mean, their food bank is like 15 feet by 20 feet. I mean, this is huge, not like some of the stand-up pantries around the county. But, and that's in conjunction with St. Peter's Church, I believe. So anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Pearson?
Yes. Yes. Last Thursday night, I was honored to speak at the NKU kickoff with Mr. Steers. Mr. Steers did the majority of the presentation. He did a great job. It is an evening program this year. Then next year, it will be a daytime program. This is the 19th year of the New Kent University. I'm proud to say that I was on the inaugural committee when it first came out. And it's, I think it's just a testimony of how much New Kent prides itself on transparency. You can come there and you can ask any question you'd like to ask about county government and we will answer it. And if we can't answer it, we'll put it in what's called the parking lot and we'll get back to you. So it's just a great program. Accolades to Crystal Yutzi and Wanda Watkins and Sheena McLaughlin and Mr. Hathaway for that. Next week, we are having another YMCA meeting. So the plans are in full force to bring a New Kent YMCA here. Couple of events coming up. The Faith in Blue Weekend with the New Kent Sheriff's Office and New Kent Parks and Rec is on September 20th from 10:00 to 12:00 at Quentin Elementary School. The 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony is at 8:30 on Thursday, 9/11, here at the courthouse. The New Kent Parks and Rec Fall Festival and Trunk or Treat is Friday, October 17th at 5:00 o'clock at Pine Fork Park. There's two more farmers, opportunities for farmers market this year in the fall, the last Saturday in September and in October, on September 27th and October 25th. There is a tip-a-cop fundraiser going on right now at Third Base Grill. Until 9:00, you could leave and go get dinner. And there's also a tip of firefighter event next Monday at Third Base Grill. And we are having our first clean county meeting tomorrow night of the season. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Page will be proud of you. Mr. Moyer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have my sidewalk slash town hall meeting September 16th at 9:00 in the Journey Church Coffee House. Anybody in District 2 and the rest of the county is invited to come out and talk about transportation opportunities, housing opportunities and sidewalks. And the other thing is, Ms. Watkins left me a article here that I, about the blue catfish threat that's happening in Pamunkey, the Chesapeake Bay. I heard about it down at the American Planning Association meeting in Portsmouth. And it's quite disturbing. The blue catfish are taking over the Chickahominy, the Pamunkey and down by the Chesapeake. And when they, they get these large catfish that, you know, maybe 10, 15, 20 pounds. And when you've got them, you find oysters, eels, shrimp, all these things that normally we'd be harvesting outside of those. And so they're taking over. So the idea with this article is, if you can, please go out and catch as many blue catfish as you can, okay? So we can have some other stuff besides catfish on the menu, okay? Thank you.
Or you can catch, I mean, I've caught them over 60 pounds in the Pamunkey. So they're big. Staff reports. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple of items related to the airport. You have those handouts in front of you. I'm going to first start with, as you know, for the past year, we've had an obstruction removal project ongoing, which has required us to purchase easements of adjacent property owners to the airport that are located within the takeoff and landing path of the airport. Those easements gives us the ability to go on the property and cut trees and in some cases, just top off trees so that we can keep the path clear. We have just, I believe we have two more easements to acquire. Actually, one more now because we just came to a settlement today on the easement that you have before you, which is with the Hurley family. I am bringing this to you requesting that you approve me to execute this easement agreement. It is above $50,000. All purchases above $50,000 are required to come before the board for approval. You've already appropriated the money. We already have the funds to pay for this. And I would like to say, the total cost of this purchase is $60,640. But the federal government, the FAA, is paying for $54,576. The Virginia Department of Aviation is paying for $4,851.20. And our local share, our out-of-pocket, is $1,202.80. So it's a small purchase for the county. This is the first time I'm bringing one of these to you because this is the first time we've gotten over $50,000. This property is almost entirely within the takeoff path and landing path of the airport. So it's a significant easement that we will require. It is a permanent easement. So therefore, at any time, we'll be able to go onto the property and clear as needed. You do have a motion before you that I would ask you to consider.
Any questions for Mr. Hathaway?
I'm sorry. Does this help with the entrance to the airport? Or that, or we have to do something else with that?
Yeah, this particular project does not impact the entrance to the airport. But what it does impact, this is, the FAA has made this project a requirement. They said, "We have to complete this project before we can receive funding for the new hangars that we've been planning for, for some time."
No questions. I'll entertain them with Mr. Steers.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the county administrator to execute the proposed easement agreement between New Kent County and Mr. and Mrs. Brendan Hurley in a form approved by the county attorney for the purchase of a permanent aviation easement on Tax Map Parcel 20-638.
Thank you, Mr. Steers. Any other discussion? Ms. Watkins, we poll the members, please.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye. Motion passes.
One more for Ms. Hathaway?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I have one more item regarding the airport. As you know, this is the time of the year where we're closing out fiscal year 2025. With the airport, we all know that we rely very heavily on grant funding for its operations. We're currently in a situation where our expenditures have exceeded the fund balance for the airport fund, but we've not drawn down all of the grants for fiscal year 2025. But in order to have a clean closeout and closeout in a positive cash position, I am asking that you appropriate $20,000 from general fund balance to the airport fund for the closeout of the fiscal year 2025 budget. Again, we believe we're in this situation just because of the timing of the drawdown of grants.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Hathaway, it's just a cash flow issue, though?
Yes, that's it.
Ms. Stewart?
So, and Ms. Pearson, maybe this is a question for you. If it's a cash flow issue, are we going to have $20,000 extra left over at some point in the year if we draw down grants or?
That should be reflected in FY '26 when those grants are drawn. Because a lot of those grants are multi-fiscal years.
Yes, so the FAA, the federal side of it usually takes a little bit longer. We will look at the end of FY '26 and if we are in a positive cash balance in relation to this, we'll probably come back to you and request the inverse transaction next year to send that $20,000 back to the general fund.
Thank you.
Yes.
Doesn't it go back to the general fund anyway at the end?
So not, not with the airport fund. Because they have those ongoing projects. Usually, we transfer over the capital and then the operating side of the world.
Gotcha, okay.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion? Ms. Moore?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the appropriation of $20,000 from the unassigned general fund balance to transfer to the airport fund for the purpose of maintaining a positive fund balance for the closeout of the fiscal year 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Ms. Watkins, we poll the members?
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye.
Anybody have any other business? Appointments delegated by district? Ms. Stewart, sorry.
I have one, Mr. Chair. I move to appoint Hannah Ripchick as District 5 Representative to the Social Services Advisory Board to serve a term beginning July 1, 2025 and ending June 30, 2029.
Anyone else? Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members on the appointments delegated by district?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye.
Appointments not delegated by district. Let's see, we have one. Somebody wants to make that appointment?
Is that the Chris Drucker? I move...
Ms. Young?
Anybody else want to do it?
No, no, no. Is it Ms. Young? Is that what you?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
I move to appoint Dr. Christine Young as a New Kent County Public Schools Representative to the Community Policy and Management Team to complete a two-year term beginning January 1, 2024 and ending June 30, 2026.
Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members on the appointments not delegated by district, please?
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye.
Does anybody, has anybody still that New Kent alter to the Richmond Regional Plan and Commission? I mean, transportation planning. There's no other business. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the board supervisors will be held at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, October 14, 2025. And the next work session will be held at 9:00 AM on Monday, September 29, 2025, both here in the boardroom. No other business. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Ms. Watkins, poll the members.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye.
Need to adjourn. Everyone have a safe trip home.